Okay, I was getting cold there guys, sorry. Vice Chair Duarte, please make public the motions adopted in camera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There were no motions adopted in camera to be reported publicly. Information received in camera, the following information was received in camera. Retirements and Mary Di Leonardo, Kathleen Dutart, and Wendy Glinski retiring effective June 30th, 2020. Acting Department Heads, Dennis Greitmark and Jessica Masiel. Appointed as Acting Department Heads effective September 1, 2020 for a period of up to one year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by?
Duarte.
Vice Chair Duarte, seconded.
Mr. Chair, I have a notice of motion to present.
Go ahead.
Uh, I would like to raise a notice of motion regarding school-generated funds.
Okay, so we will add that under Agenda Item.
10.8.
10.8? Well, unless we take it to a vote and, do you want this as an action item, Trustee De Rosa, or did you?
No, it's just a notice of motion for the moment.
Alright, thank you. So, so we will add it to 10.1? Sorry, 10.8?
Thank you.
10.8. Regenerated funds. Alright, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, seconded by?
Trustee De Rosa.
Trustee De Rosa. All in favor? Or would you like me to take a roll call?
Roll call, please.
Alright. Uh, Trustee De Rosa.
Uh, in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella. Alright, I'll come back to you. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Go back to, um, uh, Trustee Carabella.
I'm in favor.
I was, I'll call you next. You were next on the line. Alright? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella, are you there?
Yeah, they're having technical problems.
Alright, so we'll have to come back to trustee, I mean, the motion passes anyways. Uh, the students, I'll move on to, uh, Student Trustee Caratell.
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Carabella? Are you there yet? So then I will move on. Um, so we have approved the agenda. Are there any declarations of conflict this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to Agenda Item Number Four. There are no presentations, there are no delegations, Agenda Item Five. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Approval of the Minutes. Approval of the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 Regular Board Meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a mo- a mo- a motion to approve the minutes?
I move it.
I'll pu- I'll move.
So moved by Trustee O'Brien, seconded by Trustee Agnew?
Yep, yep.
Uh, are there any, um, all in favor? Or do we want to do a ro- a roll call? We can do a roll call. Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa?
Sorry, I'm, I was on mute again. Um, in favor.
So we're approving Agenda Item 6.1, which is Approval of the May 19th Minutes.
Yes. In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee, uh, Carabella?
Um, I just got on, so I'll abstain. Is it approval of the agenda?
No, it's approval of the minutes. We've passed the agenda already.
Wonderful. I, I do, I've gone over them and I'm in favor. Thank you.
Alright, so, um, alright, so we are now, um, continuing. So she's in, Trustee De Rosa, you're in favor?
Uh, yes.
The minutes? Alright, Trustee, Vice Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caratell?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Motion pass, or minutes pass. Uh, Agenda Item 6.2, Minutes of the May 21st, 2020 Special Board Meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve.
Uh, Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
Seconded.
Uh, Vice Chair Duarte? Alright, so I will do a roll call on this as well. Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'll abstain. I wasn't there. Thank you.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi abstain, I wasn't there also. Student Trustee Caratell?
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Thank you. The minutes of May 21st have passed. Uh, business arising from the previous meeting. A list of outstanding items is provided for your information. We will now move on to Agenda Item Eight. Uh, which is an action item, 8.1 Financial Reporting and Board Responsibility for Financial Oversight.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I have my hand up for the, uh, business.
For business arising from the business, uh, from the previous meetings?
From previous meetings, yes.
7.1, yes, go ahead.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, on November 5th, 2019, the board passed a resolution stating be it resolved that in December 2, 2020, the Board of Trustees receive a staff report on the progress made towards achievement of the goals of the math action plan with measurable outcomes using qualitative and quantitative data. Um, it's not on the business reviews from previous meetings. I'd like to know if it could please be put on.
So can you please give me the resolution number?
Um, I can, I chat it to you in a second. Okay?
So what is the meeting date, please, again?
November 5th, 2019.
November 5th, 2019. Alright, so we can search that through. Yeah, no problem. Uh, Vice Chair Duarte, you have, um, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have a motion on the table for the Boardroom Audio-Video System, which has not been fulfilled. I'm wondering if that should be on the unfinished business too.
Alright, so are you asking for it to be added to, um, to?
Yes.
The unfinished business?
Yes, please.
Okay. Alright, so can you give us a date? Can you give us resolution number, please?
Uh, I don't have it. It's just the past couple of meetings, I think.
Alright, that's fine.
Thank you.
So we can add to it. Alright, so we will add both items. Alright, so can I now move, or are there any other, uh, amendments to the? Uh, to the, um, business arising from previous meetings? Okay, so then we will move on to Action Items Eight, 8.1 Financial Reporting and Board Responsibility for Financial Oversight. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor. Can you please speak to this particular motion, which was given on May 19th, 2020 Regular Board Meeting? I will read the motion first, however.
Thank you. You will read the motion, okay?
Yes, but, yes, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees directed Secretary of the Board, starting in the fiscal year 202021, to provide the Board of Trustees actually monthly financial results compared to the plan for the same month, and identify the variances with appropriate explanation. The second portion of that particular motion be it further resolved that all changes to the approved plan over $150,000 will be reviewed and approved by the board. May I have a mover?
I move.
Moved by Trustee De Rosa, seconded by?
I'll second it. Carabella.
Trustee Carabella. Alright, let's.
May I speak to the motion, Mr. Chair? Do you want?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Thank you very much. So, um, my fellow trustees, the approval of the annual budget and financial oversight throughout the year is one of the trustees' most important fiduciary responsibilities in the act. The ability to compare actual financial results to the budget on a monthly basis is essential to the trustee's ability to exercise meaningful and timely financial oversight during the year. The June budget does not currently get inputted into the financial, uh, system monthly. Therefore trustees do not have the ability to conduct a line-by-line review of actual revenues and expenses at the result, uh, and the resulting variances on a monthly basis. Notwithstanding, the March update to the Ministry of, um, to the Ministry of the year-to-date actuals, in other words, in March, we report seven months' worth of year-to-date actuals. Uh, the first and only opportunity trustees get to compare 12 months' worth of actual results to the budget is at the end of October, after the August year-end results, uh, become available, which is well after the, the June budget submission to the Ministry. This timeline does not afford trustees the time to make a thorough and independent assessment of the proposed budget for approval and submission to the Ministry in June. Last year trustees approved the June budget on the best information they had available and on staff's recommendations. The passing of this motion will further enhance the trustee's ability to conduct a line-by-line analysis of actual results during the year and be better prepared to approve the bud- the future budgets, submissions, and updates. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Let's open it up for discussion. We have Trustee Agnew that has the floor.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair.
From the 150, so we're gonna need a ju-- well, perhaps the question now is, what is the justification moving down from 150 to $100,000?
Well, it's a, it's a number--
Can somebody speak to that?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to speak to that, because--
All right, so trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
So when you refine the extrapolation of the KPMG's materiality guidelines, right, it actually works out to be 112, so it, it just rounded down as a result of it.
Isn't it perhaps the best, so to keep things nice and neat, would it not make sense to use the same, the same formula that our auditors use? So that we keep it all the same?
I have done that, sir.
So you're saying $100,000 is now what they're using? I thought you just said it was 113,000.
No, 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 let me repeat what I said. When you actually find the calculations, okay, 150,000 was a rough number, okay, and a good ballpark number. When I actually went back to refine the calculations using the KPMG criteria for materiality and overlaid that criteria over the controllable expenses, it actually comes out to 112,500 approximately. So for the sake of rounding and for the sake of working with a round number, I picked 100,000. It, it stands to reason that the 100,000 is, you know, at some point in time if we decide it's not appropriate--
Trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, just bear with me. I'm not asking you to justify it. I was just going back to if you're using, if you wanna use what the auditors are using, so then I would think that the amount should stay the same. But if you're, if you wanna move it to $100,000, I'm happy to, to bring that to a motion, so we would then--
Mr. Chair, we're moving it to $100,000 on the basis of the refinement of KPMG's criteria, okay? Overlay it over to, to our exercise here. So this is, this is reflective, it's a reflection of KPMG's criteria, okay?
Agreed, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understood the same thing. So are there any, or trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee DeRosa, you keep using this term, pilot, trustee DeRosa, you there?
Just a minute, I wanna plug in, make sure I, I don't run out of battery there.
Trustee DeRosa?
Give us your question, and then he can respond to it.
All right, you keep using this term "materiality." Can you please expound on that term for someone like me who's not an accountant?
All right, so trustee DeRosa, you have the floor to address materiality.
I think the--
Materiality is, is really defined, it's, it's, it's used, it's a term used by auditors to establish a level of risk that they're willing to tolerate. And expressed in percentage terms, KPMG, if I can use an example, because the, the term or the barometer is not the same amongst auditors. So, but for KPMG, it's 2%. So it's 2% of--
Trustee DeRosa, you're no longer on. So I really need a mover, our second there, we've had a mover--
Excuse--
Trustee, so excuse me, trustee DeRosa. So before we go on any further, I made an error. I should, we should have had a second there, because we only had a mover. So trustee Duarte, you moved it, can I have a second there to the amendment?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Okay, so now you can continue.
Okay, so materiality in, in, in few words than, than more is a, as a means of establishing the level of risk that accountants, auditors establish as a tolerance level. So KPMG, for instance, uses 2% of the total budget, which amounts to approximately $8 million. So they devise their testing procedures along those lines, because they don't have the capability to look at all the transactions. They don't do 100% verification. So they establish a limit of risk that they're willing to tolerate in order to devise their audit program. In how does this apply to the board? We don't necessarily want to look at every transaction or every, every variance, you know, of $50. It's not really practical to do that.
Trustee, I get it. Hello? Is that sufficient? Trustee O'Brien, is that sufficient for you? Or would you rather ha-- would you like to have superintendent Loffs to address the definition of materiality?
That's sufficient for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, trustee O'Hern Zarnota, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I have a clarification and then a question. So as far as the two motions that we have on the table, the original one was a notice of motion through trustee DeRosa. And then, just so I'm clear, the amendment was through trustee Duarte, vice chair Duarte, but trustee DeRosa spoke to the amendment. So whose motions are whom's?
The original motion, which was established on, what was the date, May 19th? That, the original motion. We're having what is referred to as a, what was the word? I can't think of it. A friendly amendment, which is sort of housekeeping. So we're really looking at the same motion, and we're just putting in two changes. The date, 2021 January, and then we're changing the 150 to $100,000. So it's referred to a friendly amendment.
No, and thank you for that, I do understand that. I'm just questioning why the amended amendment came from trustee Duarte, but trustee DeRosa spoke to the amount.
It was--
I'm confused.
So no, so, no, hang on. Trustee, trustee DeRosa was speaking to the term "materiality."
No, he was speaking to the reduction of 150,000 to $100,000.
No, no, I know, he addressed the 100-- I asked a question why he was using 100,000. That was just a clarification, because I was one--
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, he wasn't using 100,000. Mr. Duarte, trustee Duarte, sent the amendment in. So I'm just wondering why trustee Duarte did not speak to $100,000 and why trustee DeRosa did. I'm confused.
All right, so, no, and that's a good point, thank you very much. So trustee Duarte, can you please speak to the 100,000 amount?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. So the original, original motion said 150,000, okay? It is a number as explained by the expert. I'm no, not an accounting expert at all, and it's great, and thank you trustee DeRosa for bringing it up. I, I think tightening it up a little more to 100,000, and that's my, I'm just going by gut feelings, I'm not an expert, as I said, trustee Zarnota. And I hope you do accept the explanation provided by trustee DeRosa. He's an expert on that thing, so I'll go with that, too.
Okay, thank you--
Do you have a follow-up?
I do, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Through secretary Daly to superintendent Loffs. With this motion that we've seen, been able to digest, how many extra hours do you estimate it will take to prepare such a report for us in the manner that's being presented? Ballpark would be great.
So trustee, superintendent Loffs, you have the floor? Or no, sorry, director Daly, sorry.
Sorry, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I, I will ask to redirect it, but I'd just like to thank trustee O'Hern for directing the question to our expert, the treasurer of our board and our superintendent. So I'm happy to have superintendent, through you, Mr. Chair.
So we'll pass it on to superintendent Loffs to give us some insights on what is required to report this new cycle.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Very good question, trustee O'Hern Zarnota. It's gonna take us some time. We need to establish the reporting structure for it. We need to establish monthly assignments, monthly review, monthly investigations, things that we really haven't done. We currently, how we do it is we currently, we're receiving at the next board meeting, is we provide quarterly reports, which looks at where we are in basis of the year. So for example, back in February, for our last quarterly report, we provided a report in February, numerous different permutations and calculations from different areas of the board. And back in February, we were about halfway through the year. So we provided updates as to where we were halfway through the year. We're gonna be sending another one, like I said, for May 31st, which will be three quarters of the way through the year, so another quarterly report. So those will be coming. So those reports do include where we are looking at currently and what we estimate what our remaining balance is based on our revised estimate. But we have looked at it, it's a very-- it's difficult for us right now to, I guess, maybe we'll back up. The revised estimate is, sorry, revised motion, just have some clarification on it. But it will, I will take some time to put into place, depending on what the-- especially the line-by-line portion. We're assuming right now that it's gonna be a summary line-by-line portion, a line-by-line of the 6,000 or 7,000 accounts that we currently have. So we're assuming that it's gonna be a summary based on some ministry guidance that we have in our current reporting structure.
Do you have a follow-up, trustee O'Hern Zarnota?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to, to say that I think it is important to see your bottom line sort of each month, so to get your bearings and to see if you're on budget or not and see what's, what's happening. I think we have the, if I understand, we do, can do it. So I think it will help us to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question for, I believe, director Daly and superintendent Loffs. I noticed that it's anything over $100,000. You give us just an idea of what that would mean? Because I currently know I'm gonna use, when superintendent Porcassen makes a purchase for textbooks, it comes to the, to the board table, and those are usually over $200,000. But just, I just like to have an idea of how many items will have to come to the board on a regular basis for $100,000 to for it to be approved?
So would you like superintendent Loffs to respond to that?
If director Daly feels that superintendent Loffs is the best person, which I probably assume that would be the best person to answer it.
Thank you, that's very diplomatic. So I give it to director Daly, and then he can choose whatever he wants to do with it.
I'll turn it over to superintendent Loffs.
All right, so superintendent Loffs, you can address the first portion of that. And then I think we have superintendent Merrick that would like to provide some insight as well. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good question, trustee Guzzo. One thing I should mention is the revised motion actually speaks to, and my understanding of the revised motion is that it's comparing what we had originally presented back in the budget estimates, so the ones that we do in June, so it's just preference, I was saying. It's most years of June this year, it's not so much. And then comparing that--
I'm sorry, superintendent Loffs, point of privilege. I don't know who's, there's some rustling of papers, and I'm having a hard time hearing you. So if I could just ask that if there's somebody who's rustling papers near the mic, if they could please just stop for one second, so I can actually hear what you're saying?
It's not me, hands off.
If you go a little closer then, too, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the revised motion that was presented tonight actually has the comparatives being the budget estimates that were, and we're gonna call it a June. It says June, but really, I believe, what it's referring to is the budget estimates that typically are approved in June, comparing that to the revised estimates to which we are typically approving in December. So maybe, I think, maybe some clarification might be in order in those here, just to make sure we're talking about the same items. Now, the $100,000 comparatives, and bringing it back to board from what the motion reads, is that it would be brought back for items that are different between the estimates and revised estimates. So really, that would be twice a year, or sort of once a year, when we bring back the revised estimates in December. So that is, is my interpretation, which differs from the original estimate, which I think is more on a, well, it's different than the original estimates.
Okay, so, but if I read the first section of it that will provide with a line-by-line report of variances to budget exceeding $100,000, and that's monthly, that's how I read the first part of it?
That's correct, but that is not, we're not bringing that necessarily back to board for approval. We're bringing that back to board to explain why there is a variance. The expense would have already occurred. This reporting is done after the fact, so the expense would have already occurred. So we'd be explaining why there is a variance, multiple per month.
Thank you, superintendent Loffs. I understand that superintendent Merrick would like to weigh in on this. So you have the floor, superintendent Merrick.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and through the Chair. I can offer a bit of an input on this one. And having worked in the private sector, I know this is very common in the private sector. But I would say our operations are a lot different than, you know, a manufacturing plant would be, where you kind of have, you know, typical run rates each month, and you're, you're bringing in so many raw materials to produce widgets and kind of turning those, those things over into, into, into raw goods. Our, our operations is made up, I mean, a lot of it's predominantly salaries, which are fairly static and kind of constant throughout the year. And then the rest of it is a lot of one-time purchases. So whether that purchase occurs in September 30th or October 1st, will have a big impact on, on, on when, you know, how you see those month-to-month reporting items come in. So I'd caution trustees that what you think you might be seeing as far as those, those monthly explanations may just be a lot of work and a lot of things for, for you to go through and for, and for staff to go through, to kind of report that, you know, the invoice was cut, or the PO was cut one day later, or, or what have you. The other one is, you know, energy purchases are kind of the one thing that, while it is constant throughout the year, they vary wildly with the weather, and we can't predict that. So while we can do a good job, or a good job estimating over the entire season, doing the month-to-month prediction is very challenging. And we spend about, you know, roughly $7, $8 million a year on energy. So you're gonna see, I mean, that's probably one that is gonna be $100,000 variance every month, just because predicting, predicting the weather is a, is a tough thing. And I'd say on the whole, over the course of a year, we have a pretty good track record at hitting our, our numbers across the year, and we make those in-month variances. You know, if we spend more one month, we know we have to dial it back the next month. So I think we have a pretty good track record hitting our, our year-end numbers. And, and, you know, from my standpoint in my department, we have about, I have about 2,000 to 2,500 lines to go through. So again, echoing superintendent Loffs's comments that I would hope that we're looking at some high-level lines that are not going, you know, exactly line-by-line, because that's gonna be a lot of work for superintendent Loffs's team and figuring out, and doing that reporting, and then my team going through and figuring out where the variances are and the exact reasons for each of those. And I also echo superintendent Loffs's comments that I hope we're not bringing the, you know, any of those overages that are in the first section of the, of the motion, to bring in those, any overages back to the board for approval if they're over $100,000 different, because that's where a situation like, you know, a cold, a cold snap in October may lead to us having to, you know, replace heating units, et cetera, a month earlier than the prior year, or a month earlier than expected. And if we're bringing those back to board for approvals, it could delay us in getting those, that equipment fixed and, and, and running, which got a massive impact on our, on our operations. So I offer those comments for trustee consideration as well.
Thank you, superintendent Merrick. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I would, I would like to get an understanding of, from trustee DeRosa and also from superintendent Loffs. I'm kind of hearing two different expectations. So I'd like to, to see if, if, maybe it's, maybe it's just me, maybe I'm wrong, but to get a, a clear understanding of what the expectations are. So from my understanding, we're going to get a monthly report, and in that monthly report, there's gonna be a variance column, which is, which is to estimate, and then that, that is all. We're just getting the report, it's for information. And then as per superintendent's loss comment, at, at one point through the year, or maybe it's two points through the year, there will be a reporter and expectations for trustees to, to approve some of those variances. So that's, that's kind of the overview of what I'm, what I'm hearing, as opposed to, as per superintendent Merrick's point, to have the board come back and approve every single overage of $100,000 in certain areas where we really don't have any, any input or say anyways, salaries or, or energy, for example, is, is a, is a good example. So I'm assuming that the implication is that it's things trustees are approving expenses over $100,000 that are in our purview and just not, not overall. And then, and after that, I have just one other comment is my, my questioning whether this should be in camera versus in the public forum. If we're gonna be talking about salaries and other things that, you know, we can't just highlight necessarily the variances that, that are, should be in camera and out of camera, where again, we're doubling the workload. So trustee DeRosa, or trustee, can you comment on my understanding? Is that, is that what's happening? We're getting a monthly variance report? And then once or twice a year, there will be some action required by the trustees to approve expenses over $100,000 within areas that are in our purview? Is that accurate?
Thank you, thank you, trustee Murphy, for, for the question. I'm gonna try to, to shed the light and maybe some clarification on this. First of all, let me, let me speak to the resourcing required on this thing. It is contemplated here that, that, like, like there is in every system, there's the capability to pull, pull reports and programmed reports that really essentially do the work of extracting monthly numbers against, against budgets. So from my understanding with the new system and probably with the old one, there is an overlay program that needs to be written or is already, comes with the software, and the, the reports have to be defined within, within that, that programming. So that is probably the major step in being able to extract this information. So I, through discussions on this, and we didn't come to this conclusion, or at least I didn't come to this willy-nally. There's been a lot of discussion in the background. We have just done a systems conversion. There is a report writing feature which, through which we can define monthly reporting against monthly budget. And the activation of this report, I believe, the timeframes of January 2021 is a workable timeframe in order to get this functionality in the system in place. The effort that requires from there, assuming that you're able to, to pull out, when you're in a position to pull out these reports, is really an exercise in trying to-- And I put out $100,000 there. It's based on a particular criteria. It wasn't pulled, it wasn't pulled out of the air. But if we see through experience as we go on that the $100,000 is no longer appropriate or is redundant, then we certainly have the opportunity to, to modify accordingly to what is more workable, what is more practical. The point is that we don't know whether $100,000 is at all practical or workable, because we don't pull out these variances today. And, you know, to simplify, to, to, I think, to really rationalize and then simplify it in real, down-to-earth terms. You know, a family budget, you, let's say you, you, you spend, you plan to spend $600, $6,000 in the year, $5,000 a month.
So trustee DeRosa, somehow you've been muted again?
I don't, yeah. So I was trying to get, to give a practical example of a household budget for food, for instance, right? You can choose to spend, if you decide that you're gonna put, set out a budget for $6,000 a year and not monitor it every month, the only time you're gonna find out whether you're in a good position or in bad position is at the end of the year, where possibly, most of the time, it's gonna be too late to do anything about it. This is what we, if you monitor it every month, you could adjust your spending the following month, because you, you know, you know you're gonna be over by the end of the year. This is all, it's a simple example, but it's an appropriate example to what we're trying to achieve. So the $100,000 is, is rationalized based on KPMG's criteria. If it becomes impractical, we have the option certainly of reviewing it and changing it at some point in time. With respect to the second part of the motion, I wanna, I wanna make the point that this is a one-time, in-the-year situation, okay? Because between June, when we approve the budget, and December, when we do our, our resubmission, okay? Last year, what we did is we approved the budget in June under good recommendations of the staff, and in December, we were asked to approve an amended budget. Everything that happened in between was never, never really an issue. What I'm suggesting, that once a year, when we amend the budget in December, every item that we changed in that budget, from June to December, over $100,000, that we'd be given an opportunity to look at it. This is a one-time thing in the-- It's, it's within our purview. I don't know where I left you off, guys, but the second part of the, of the motion--
So trustee, trustee DeRosa, trustee DeRosa, just bear with me for a minute. So there is a couple of things that I need to address here. So by us going to a month-to-month approval, we can get a month-to-month of, of reporting of what is taking place. But the-- Excuse me, excuse me. Trustee, excuse me, let me finish, please.
Then one correction, one correction, please. Mr. Chair, it's not a month-to-month approval. It's a month-to-month identification of the variances and--
Exactly, so that's what I was trying to get to, so if you allow me--
I did an explanation, that's it.
All right, so listen. So the, the word approval is misleading, we may have to take that out. So the ministry only allows us to, that is, the trustees, to approve budgets quarterly, or not quarterly, three times a year. If you're asking for a reporting cycle of every month to let us know year-to-date where we are, is one thing. But if you're adding the approval component there, then we can't do that as trustees, because the act doesn't allow us to do that.
Mr. Chair, I wanna clarify. What we're asking to approve in the second part of the motion is the changes from the June budget to the December submission. That's it, once a year.
I understand that, trustee DeRosa. What I'm saying to you is that the reason the cycles are June, October, November, reporting cycle, and then December is because that's when trustees approve. I think what you're after here is a month-to-month reporting without the actual approval, because the quarterly will pick up the differences that occur month-to-month. Because one month, you may be ahead in one category, whereas the next month, or sorry, when it gets to the quarterly, it'll balance out what is projected, what the projected expenditures are.
Mr. Chair, if we are good planners on a month-to-month basis, the variances should be minimized, and that's what it's all about. I mean, I recall looking at some of the numbers in the, in the past years. There are major swings between, between categories within the income statement. My, the point is that by the time you get to compare and to identify those swings, right? It's too late, that's the point.
I get your point.
I can't do anything about it. So the simple thing we gotta do here, to distill all this down to the simplest common denominator, is that we have to input our--
All right, so your motion speaks to that. Let's allow somebody else to speak, so trustee O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I was asking a question which had two sides to it. I was, I was hoping for a yes or no answer, but--
Exactly, so, yes. So I'm giving you the follow-up. Trustee Murphy, you have a follow-up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll ask my question again. So what I would like to get an understanding is if trustee DeRosa and trustee Loffs, or, sorry, trustee, I didn't mean to-- superintendent, I didn't mean to demote you to trustee. Superintendent Loffs are on the same page. So this is my understanding. I hate it when mom and dad fight, but, but this is my understanding. So we're going to receive a monthly report that shows variances. That's an information item, full stop. Once a year, there will be a comparison to the June budget, and that will have a list of detailed variances over $100,000. and that will have a list of detailed variances over a hundred thousand dollars. And at that time, the trustees are to review that and vote to approve those, um, those variances. So that's my understanding from this discussion. So trustee DeRosa, is that what you're putting forward, yes or no? And, and superintendent Loffs, is that what your understanding is, yes or no?
So we'll put it to superintendent Loffs first, and then I will put, pass it back to, uh, trustee DeRosa.
Thank you for your, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, that is my understanding at this point in time, that's what it is. And just to remind trustees that we do bring back the estimates anyway in December for approval, which we did this past year, um, which we actually brought in January, which I think we might wanna change just the dates to the actual report instead. One thing though, just to kind of, like, good, uh, Mr. Chair's point into, uh, my back, I know trustee Guzzo asked, or sorry trustee O'Hern, so I don't ask the number of time or hours it takes. One thing we have to refer is, once we determine these variances, it's not just our, my department or finance's responsibility to explain the variances. We will have to go to, like trustee Merrick mentioned before, the facilities, and have them explain it, and then, uh, pull it all together and then bring it back into the report. So it's, it's more than just the finance department's, uh, hours, and it's, it's a more
Okay, trustee DeRosa, can you address trustee Murphy's?
I, I just wanna make
Second question.
But I just wanna make, yes, the answer is yes, trustee Murphy.
Okay, pull his mic, pull his mic.
Can I address the, the, the points that Mr. Merrick made?
Um, how about we allow other people that haven't had a chance to speak, and then I'll come back to you at the end?
Mr. Chair, my, my second part of that was, should this be in camera? Actually, another yes or no would be great also.
I, I would think that the component that you referred to, salaries and changes there, yes, I believe that should be in camera. But I'll, I'll, I'll pass it over to superintendent, uh, Loffs.
Uh, thank you for your, Mr. Chair. Um, I would agree with, uh, uh, Chair, uh, Anthony Mossi. One thing I should mention though, too, is I think, uh, trustee DeRosa did mention this as well, the materiality threshold of eight point four million, which was outlined in the report, that's actually coming up, uh, a little bit later in our presentation, or in our board meeting today. Uh, I understand that, I believe what trustee DeRosa did was take eight point four million, um, multiply that by fifteen percent or so, which the board essentially controls, but everything else is prescribed, and then divide that by twelve, which is I think where he probably got the hundred thousand dollars. So just some clarification.
Uh, is that satisfactory, trustee Murphy, or, or have we left something out?
Uh, no, that's good, thank you very much.
Thank you. So now, uh, I will move on to trustee O'Brien.
I, I believe trustee Agnew's ahead of me.
Um, not according to my she? All right, so trustee Agnew, you have the floor, my apologies.
Uh, no worries, thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you trustee O'Brien. Um, just a question for trustee DeRosa. You mentioned a few times about, um, some discussions to get from the hundred and fifty down to the hundred thousand, and that there was some, some discussions behind the scenes, or there was some conversations to come up with that revised number. Uh, so I, I'm just trying to understand who those conversations were with, what was going on behind the scenes, um, again, to get from a hundred and fifty thousand to begin with, and then down to a hundred thousand. So I, I'm just not sure if, if I've missed something here. Uh, so if you could explain, that would be great.
Okay, so your question is to trustee DeRosa then? All right, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor to respond to trustee Agnew.
Thank you, uh, no, there's no big conspiracy behind the scenes, no, uh, none of that, that
Sorry, this point of privilege, that's not what I asked. You had mentioned number of times about, uh, having conversations behind the scenes and conversations to get to that number. I'm not alluding to a conspiracy, I'm trying to understand who the conversations were with to come up with that number, and then to bring this down to a hundred thousand dollar number. Cause again, back to what trustee, uh, O'Hern Zernata had said, is that trustee Dwork put the hundred thousand forward, and you spoke to it, and now I just wanna understand what these conversations were, thank you.
Uh, trustee Agnew, thank you for your question, but I can assure you that the, the word behind the scenes is, is certainly not reflective of what's taking place here. Uh, and I just wanna bring that, that point of clarification. The consideration for a hundred fifty thousand dollars started with me, and it got refined down to, um, in, in, to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, from a hundred and fifty, on the basis of estimates that I started doing in the background, um, to see how I could best come up with that number. So finally, uh, the, the original number was a hundred and fifty, um, because I didn't have specifics, uh, and I took a best guess, okay? That number was comfortable, uh, in, in, in respect to that, one of the primary consideration in setting that number is that we don't want to tie the operations of people's hands behind their backs and doing their job on an ongoing basis, okay? So what further, what, what further refined that number is that once I, um, familiarized myself with, uh, with the auditor's estimates for materiality, the number actually works out, uh, to approximately a hundred and twelve. So I just rounded it down, and, and, and it's as simple, it's simple as that. What we need to realize is that the second part of this motion is a only a one-time in-the-year situation whereby, between the, uh, months of June, when is the first submission, uh, of the first budget to the ministry, uh, and December, when it's, when, uh, the update is due, uh, we are given the opportunity to look at everything that's changed between those two day, those two dates, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so it's not an ongoing thing during the year, it's a one-time thing. And it's a request to change what the current situation is, which is you approve
Sorry, point of order, trustee DeRosa, that actually wasn't the question I asked. You, you answered, um, the question that I asked, so
I did answer it. I did, I did tell you how I came to the hundred thousand.
No, but you were talking about it being a one-time, and that wasn't my question. Um, and just a follow-up, you said about how you came to the hundred thousand dollars, um, but you had a hundred and fifty, and trustee Dwork came to a hundred thousand. So did you come to the hundred thousand dollars? Or did trustee Dwork come to the hundred thousand? Cause you keep referencing it, that you had revisited the number and rounded it back down to a hundred thousand, so I'm
Yes, I established a range of between a hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand. Trustee Dwork, uh, changed it to a hundred thousand, and, uh, he came to that conclusion. And, um, this is a friendly change to the original motion, only with the intent of refining it, and not changing the substance of it, so
Perhaps the, the question then should be answered by, that, that second part of your question, trustee Guz, uh, uh, Agnew, should really be addressed by vice chair Dwork. How we arrived at a hun- at a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. In my, in my simple mind, uh, a hundred thousand dollars a month was a, a good number. And as I said, this is a friendly request, okay? I did have this, uh, conversation with, uh, with trustee DeRosa on the number, and, uh, to me, made, made absolutely sense. Uh, my, uh, role was, intention was to tidy it up and make sure the motion was, uh, well presented. So again, this isn't, we're not changing the essence of the original motion, which is a friendly, uh, request to change. And if trustees believe that we should, uh, month-to-month, be careful about where our monies are coming and going, uh, I would, uh, request trustees to, to think about this, uh, seriously.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a, trustee Agnew, do you have a supplementary for, uh, vice chair Dwork?
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I don't disagree with trustee Dwork that, uh, it is a responsibility, we do need to take it seriously. I do however have full faith in, in our, our staff that they are doing that. They do, um, you know, further back to trustee DeRosa's point earlier that he had made about family budget, uh, and realizing at the end of the year, you have no more money. I do believe that our staff is, um, on a regular basis, making sure that we, we do have money, and they're not waiting to the end of the year to find out they have none. Uh, so no, I don't have any further comment.
Point of order. Uh, yes, uh, trustee O'Hern Zernata, you have a point of order?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, we have a full agenda to get through tonight, so I'd like to suggest a motion to lay this issue on the table. Which is not debatable, we just need to take a vote, I believe.
Yes, take a look. I'm not hearing anybody.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota, are you asking that, that laying it on the table be taken to a vote?
I would, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the acknowledgement, yeah.
Thank you, I was muted, my, not my doing. All right, so let's take it to lay this on the table. Uh, trustee DeRosa, are you in favor or against?
Not in favor, I'm against.
Okay, against. Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Dwork?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor to run an efficient meeting.
Uh, trustee Murphy?
Opposed. I'm sorry.
Opposed? Uh, so the, trustee Caratell?
I abstain.
Trustee Swan?
Abstain.
Trustee Bambra? Trustee Bambra? Anyways, the motion fails. Um, I will now take this matter to a vote, I think we've discussed it enough. So we have a mover and we have a seconder. It was moved by trustee DeRosa, it was seconded by trustee Carabella, I believe.
Trustee O'Brien, I guess.
Um, just a question, Mr. Chair, are we voting on the amendment?
Yes, I was just going to state that, so, um, who moved the amendment then?
Trustee
All right, so the amendment was moved by trustee Dwork, and it was seconded by? Trustee O'Brien, all right. So we are now moving, we are now voting on the amended, amendment that you see before you on the screen. Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Caratell?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
Oppose.
Trustee Bambra?
Opposed, sorry, I've been cut out for two minutes.
Oppose, all right, so the, the motion passes. So we have an amended motion, uh, which does away with the original motion. All right, thanks for, uh, being patient. We'll move on to agenda item eight point two, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, year-end audit planning report from KPMG. Superintendent Loffs, can you please give us some background, and then I will read the motion over it? Perhaps I'll read the motion first. So resolve that the Houghton Catholic District School Board approve the external auditor's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year-end audit planning report. May I have a mover? Can I have a mo- a motion to move?
I move it.
All right, vice chair Dwork moves it, uh, seconded by trustee O'Brien. All right, so, uh, trustee, uh, or sorry, superintendent Loffs, can you please this, bring this to a, give us some background on this?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, taxes a year on audit plan that were presented and approved by the audit committee last week. The statements will, will be submitted, uh, I'm saying the statements, our financial statements will be submitted to the ministry by November fifteenth. It'll be brought to the audit committee on Thursday, November nineteenth, and to board for approval on December first. If there are any required changes, these will be sent to the ministry after the December first board meeting. Um, any questions relating to this, uh, motion?
Are there any, any, uh, questions? Is there any discussion on this item? If there are no discussions, I do wanna point, make, um, um, one observation. Um, KPMG have been, uh, our auditor since twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-one, their contract comes up. Um, so I would just, uh, like to, uh, point out that in section two fifty-three, um, one, um, after five years, we need to bring the matter and put it out for tender. Um, so can I have, we will take this matter to a vote, to accept it? Oh, yes, did not? Oh, sorry, can I have a mover and a seconder? Yes, I did. So it was, uh, it was moved by, um, vice chair Dwork, and it was seconded by trustee
So we're voting eight point two, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, in favor.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Anthony Mossi, in favor, Caratell?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Motion carries. Agenda item eight point three, renaming of Jean Vanye Catholic Secondary School. Um, superintendent Crowell, could you, uh, well, before I do that, I will read the motions. Resolve that the Houghton Catholic District School Board approve the following two names ordered in, in order in priority as possible names for Jean Vanye Secondary School. The second part to the motion, be it resolved, be it further resolved, that the board-approved list of possible school names be submitted to His Excellency Bishop Crosby for his consideration. May I have a mover?
I move it.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by?
Dwork.
All seconded.
Trustee Agnew. All right, so is there, is anybody wish to speak to this? Superintendent Crowell, perhaps you can provide us with the background on how we arrived at the two names that we have, that you will be giving us this evening?
Certainly, uh, three, Mr. Chair, the intended this report is to provide trustees with an update of the renaming of Jean Vanye Catholic Secondary School. Since the board meeting and motion to proceed with the school renaming on March third, the school renaming committee was established, uh, and the first meeting was held on April twenty ninth to begin the process. The school renaming committee included school staff, parents, students, pastor of the school parish, trustees, and school board staff. Between April thirtieth and May eleventh, members of the school community were asked to provide school name suggestions. You can see these suggestions attached in appendix A. On May thirteenth, the school names selection committee met for the second time to review these suggestions, and created a shortlist of six names. Um, it was discussed at this time that we did not want to have schools with duplicate names within our board, so some of the proposed names you received from the community were not able to be considered. The shortlist that we did, uh, create is as follows, Immaculate Heart of Mary, Merciful Redeemer, Saint Andre Pasette, Saint Francis Xavier, Saint Ceteri, and Saint Jerez Alizier. Between May fourteenth and May twenty-fifth, these names were shared with the community along with a brief biography and description of each saint or theological concept. Those are provided in appendix B, and a summary of the feedback received is attached as appendix C. We received over three thousand votes, and we shared the results with you in the report. On May twenty-seventh, the committee met for a third and final time to review the results of the community vote, and determine a shortlist to bring to the board of trustees. Our policy on school naming states that at least two names must be brought for, forward to the board for consideration. The decision of the committee was to bring a shortlist of three names to the board this evening for your consideration, Saint Francis Xavier, Merciful Redeemer, and Saint Ceteri. Trustees, trustees are asked to consider the above shortlist, and settle to your approval determined a preferred name and an alternate name to be submitted, to His Excellency Bishop Crosby for his consideration. We anticipate that this response will be ready to share with trustees at the June sixteenth board meeting.
Thank you, superintendent Co- Crowell. Sorry, what'd you say? Okay, um, can you please turn your cameras off and, uh, your microphone off? Because it's playing havoc, um, with transmission. Um, so I will now call upon, um, uh, vice chair, Murphy, or Dwork, I thought it was Murphy first. All right, so I will turn it over to, uh, vice chair Dwork to speak to this matter, uh, simply because he's from the Milton community, and it's only right that, um, both him and trustee Murphy simply because he's from the Milton community, and it's only right that both him and Trustee Murphy would speak to this matter.
To you, Mr. Chair, thank you. It's my pleasure to talk a little bit about this. I just, a little quick background of the name, Saint Francis Xavier was a Jesuit. I studied in a Jesuit school, and Jesuits are very well known for education. He's a patron saint of missions and in essence founded Christianity in India and Japan. Among his many accomplishments was the foundation of churches and colleges. His life to service to Catholic faith is indicative of the present JV school motto to accept, include, and serve the Lord, which is, which we need in today's day and time for sure. We look around and see what's happening. He's also the patron saint of navigators, which connects to the guiding rule that both school and church give to our students. The chosen name, Saint Francis Xavier and the other saints, truly represents the makeup of the various communities that live and work around the JV group of schools. And the overwhelming vote of 3,274 versus 793, which is the closest vote, is a testament to this. The community, I am sure, will be very happy with this name. So I would also like to take this opportunity to thank each and every parishioner of St. Benedict Parish, every parent and student of this group of schools, of the present JV group of schools, who took time to get involved in the name selection process for voting, for your choice of the school name. And finally, many thanks to the naming committee for contributing your time to this process. And my second name, a second choice would be Saint Ceteri. Thanks a lot.
Sorry, Trustee Murphy, as the other member of the Milton community, do you wish to address this matter?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with Trustee Duarte. Saint Francis Xavier, I think exemplifies the spirit of our board and the school, being one of the founders of the Jesuit Order. An interesting fact about him is, is his ministry was focused on education of youth, and as a result, the areas where he did his ministries still retain a very strong Catholic faith. So I think it's a, it's a strong association to build our school around. I would agree also that the second choice, I would like to see it's Saint Ceteri. She actually was buried in an indigenous community right beside where I grew up, and she's buried in Kanawaki, behind their church. So I'm familiar with her, and again, she's a female saint, an indigenous saint, and during these turbulent times that we're living in, it's a good message to send, to broaden our equity and inclusion. So again, I would like to thank also the members of the naming committee. It was a new process to rename an existing school, and I know it was a very emotional process for the staff and students and parents of Jean Vany. I like to commend all of my compatriots that we were able to do this quite expeditiously and with a lot of thought and inclusion, so I'm quite happy on how the process turned out. And thank you for your support.
Oh, you have the floor? No? Oh, sorry. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor. You wish to address this matter?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and I appreciate, it's really nice to see the feedback that we get from our stakeholders. Rosie, is it possible just to scroll up for a second because I've just lost my train of thought, which unfortunately happens? Can I ask why Immaculate Heart of Mary was disqualified from it, seeing that that came back as stakeholder feedback as one of the choices? I'm just, out of curiosity, what the rationale was?
Trustee Guzzo, who are you asking the question?
Well, Superintendent Crowell, Trustee Murphy.
All right, yeah, that's fair.
Trustee Murphy or Trustee Duarte, they were on the naming committee.
So I will turn it over to Superintendent Crowell. Can you address this, please?
Sure. The intent of the renaming committee is to take the community feedback and to try to make sense of matching the feedback with sort of the, especially in this situation where it's already an existing school community. There was a lot of discussion, I wanted to make sure that the name kind of fit the school community. I think in this case, there was some strong feeling that the idea of redemption was something that the committee felt would be a strong representation of the school community. So we certainly did look very carefully at the community feedback, and we did have some very fruitful discussions as well around which names we wanted to put forward. The thinking was that we wanted to put forward one male name, one female name, and one of the theological concepts for consideration for the board.
Thank you Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, if I was to, thank you for that Superintendent Crowell, but if I was to use that analogy that you just presented, Immaculate Heart of Harry would, not Harry, oh my goodness, of Mary, would fall under that, would it not?
Yeah, then that was certainly part of the discussion that we had as well, Trustee Guzzo. It was very rich discussion that we had, the neat, like, all of the names we felt would have been appropriate names. It just, at the end of the day, the committee decided that that was the third name that they wanted to put forward. And that was, I would say consensus by the committee.
Again, the only reason why I'm asking is, you know, this is not, this is not my area. These are not my stakeholders, so I will follow the lead of obviously the Milton committee. However, if we're sending it out for stakeholder feedback and that's what's coming back from the community, I would think that that would weigh in quite a bit on where we would go with the names. That's just my thought.
And I don't disagree with you. You've got to recognize that we're talking about a handful of votes difference between the two. It was very close. So the, you know, 11.51, 11.54, 11.2 are all very close in terms of the number of votes. We're talking about, you know, very small difference.
Thank you, Trustee, or thank you Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Caratow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also would like to thank Superintendent Crowell and the other middies, other members of the school renaming committee for their good work that they've done recently. I do agree with trustees Duarte and Murphy, but in a slightly different way, where I also prefer the names of Saint Francis Xavier and Saint Ceteri. Taka Wita, sorry, it's a mouthful. I would reverse them in preference. Saint Ceteri is a homegrown saint, a native man, a native Canadian of the Mohawk tribe. She comes from this country and has roots in this area. And as many members of the committee have noted in the meetings, there's a preference among many members of the JV community for a female name to represent Jean Vany after the events that we've uncovered. And Saint Ceteri is notable within her lifetime for standing up to sexist discrimination within her community, and that's one of the reasons that she has been beatified. She's also a very modern saint, a patron for environmentalism, an important issue in this day and age. And that's why I just prefer that name, and I believe that many students would agree, for the renaming of Jean Vany. But I also do respect Saint Francis Xavier as a supporter of Catholic education. The mere drawback is that he is not a Canadian, he is from Spain, although I can see that that name had a very broad support from the community and should also be considered by the board for forwarding to the bishop. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Caratow. I'm going to turn this over to Director Daley. He has a comment to make. Go ahead.
Just with regards to Saint Francis Xavier as a selection, I think it should be noted that every subsection of the community, that was the number one choice amongst St. Benedict's Parish, the community as a whole, the staff of the school, the students of the school, by quite a wide margin.
Thank you, Director Daley. So, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment. I want to congratulate Superintendent Crowell. Amazing job in such a short period of time, you and your team, the renaming committee, to do that in such a short period of time and under such stringent conditions. It is very impressive, and thank you for all your hard work.
Trustee O'Brien, thank you for those kind words. I think I would like to take this to a vote. Here's how I'd like to proceed. Because Trustee Murphy and Trustee Duarte are from the community, I would like to start the vote with them. I would ask them which name they would prefer out of the three names that have been put forward. So, Trustee Murphy, I will start with you. What is your number one choice?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I don't mean to take anything away from Trustee Murphy or Trustee Duarte, but I don't believe that this is how this goes, how the vote goes in regards to the selection, that, that it just.
So I'm only, so Trustee Guzzo, all I, I have a list in front of me with the names of all the trustees. All I've done is reversed the order. I'm at the bottom, so I'm chairing it, so I'll take the last vote on it. The next person to vote is Trustee Murphy, followed by Trustee O'Hern Zernota, followed by Agnew, followed by yourself, followed by Trustee Duarte, followed by Trustee Carabella, followed by O'Brien, and Trustee De Rosa. So I'm not changing anything, and we always reverse the order as we do.
Voting on, my point of order is, is this the process, and is there emotion on the table?
Well, the motion has already been moved by Trustee O'Brien, and it was seconded by Trustee Agnew when I read the motion. And the motion that I read is, "Resolved that the Houghton Catholic District School Board approved the following two school names ordered in priority as possible names: Jean Vany Catholic Secondary School, preferred name," and it's given me two choices. Then the second part of the motion was, "Be it further resolved that the board approved the list of possible school names be submitted to His Excellency Bishop Crosby for his consideration." We have three names, we have to whittle it down to two names. That's what I'm attempting to do.
Thank you for clarifying, but that's not what I understood what we were voting on. That's not how you presented it.
Well, we have, so if you look at your agenda, you have three names, and we're saying that the second part of your motion, this took, this came from policy, that we were going to be submitting two names to His Excellency Bishop Crosby to approve. That's the protocol I'm following. So I, my, my asking trustees to vote is, the first time around, we're going to go with what is number one, and then I would come back to the same vote and ask what is number two. So I will proceed on that, I will proceed that way. So, Trustee Murphy, can you please lead us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would choose Saint Francis Xavier due to overwhelming community support and choice.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Zernota, what is your first choice?
If the community wants Saint Francis Xavier, that's my vote too.
Thank you. That's two in favor. Trustee Agnew?
I will put Xavier first, only again, I appreciate what Trustee Caratow had to say, but if that's what the stakeholders asked for, then that's the important thing.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo?
I will, I will put forward the same. I will agree with Xavier.
Thank you. Trustee Duarte?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Saint Francis Xavier, please.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Saint Francis Xavier.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
Saint Francis Xavier.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will go with the, what the community is asking for with Saint Francis Xavier. But I will note that Trustee Caratow, I concur with all the good reasons he put forward for support of.
Okay, but we're only voting on the first choice now.
I understand, I get it, but I want to acknowledge all of the good reasons that Trustee Caratow mentioned.
Thank you. So I will also support Saint Francis Xavier as the first choice. Trustee Caratow, your first choice?
I support Saint Francis Xavier as the first choice, but I would encourage the board to accept Saint Ceteri as the alternate.
Well, we'll get to that. Thank you. Trustee Bambra? Trustee Bambra? Okay, so we're going to go. So for your second choice, I'll use the chair. Trustee Swan, sorry, my apologies.
It's okay. I would like the first choice to be Saint Francis Xavier, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bambra, are you there? She's not there, okay. So, now for our second choice, I'm going to pick, start with Saint Ceteri. So again, I will start with Trustee Murphy?
I agree, Saint Ceteri.
That's number, your number two?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Zernota?
Agree, Saint Ceteri, second alternate.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew?
Agree as well with Saint Ceteri.
Trustee Guzzo?
Saint Ceteri.
Trustee Duarte?
Saint Ceteri.
Trustee Carabella?
Saint Ceteri Taka Wita.
Trustee O'Brien?
Saint Ceteri Taka Wita.
Very well said. Trustee De Rosa?
Saint Ceteri.
Trustee Antamasi is also Saint Ceteri. Trustee, student trustee Caratow?
Saint Ceteri, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Swan?
Saint Ceteri, please.
Trustee Bambra?
Saint Ceteri, please.
Did you want to vote on the first one as your first choice, was it Saint Francis? Because we missed you on the first vote.
Um, yes, sorry. I keep cutting out, sorry.
No problem. So, okay, so it's unanimous. Do we need to go to Merciful Redeemer? We're not presenting, we're only presenting two to the bishops, so what is everybody's thoughts?
Yes.
I think we need two, we have two, that's okay.
Two names.
You have two names as well.
Yeah, so we're just go with the two names then?
Yes, please.
Yes.
All right, so the motion carries. Thank you. We are now moving to Agenda Item Number 9, 9.1, Staff Reports, STEM and Math and Science, Extracurricular Engagement. Superintendent Percasen, please provide us with your report.
Thank you and good evening. The report before you, the purpose was to outline a plan to encourage the participation in and development of STEM initiatives at the Houghton Catholic District School Board as per the previous resolution before you. We do have consultants Melissa Carnellos, Joanne Kenny, and Mark Ives available with us tonight, who did a lot of the research into the content of the report, and I want to just take us to the comments that we have made in our final statements about what we, what our next step should be. Definitely agree that the programming is important and something that we should be working on. We want to acknowledge our fine schism programs, but acknowledge the fact that they are for grades 11 and 12 only. And we understand that there is a lot to consider here with regard to funding, training, and planning, and our recommendation or suggestion to you, the Board of Trustees, is that we take a look at forming a steering committee that would be consistent of all stakeholders, not limited to just HCDSB staff, trustees, community partners, and parents and students, but something that would be quite fulsome so that we would ensure that we had a thoughtful and specific plan. This is in relation to expanding our STEM programming, the extracurricular pieces for math and science club fairs, and that would also be something that we would be focused on as well. But that is something perhaps that is more doable even outside of the steering committee by forming some champions at our schools and moving forward in that way. Integral to all of this, of course, is staffing, and as presented at our last meeting, we understand that all of our consultants and itinerants right now in program services are very highly tasked with multiple portfolios, and our concern is adding one more thing to anyone's workload. That is where our recommendation for, at this point, rests, that we definitely feel that it is a great idea, we would like to work on it. We need to take a look at personnel, we need to look at budget, funding, and also ensure that we have proper staff and training requirements needed to move the project and initiatives forward. And that is where we landed at this point in time, trustee. And that is where we landed at this point in time, trustees. As I stated, I do have consultants available, should you have any further questions related to the report. Over to you, Mr. Chair.
Um, questions? Are there any questions, trustees? Trustee Dort, can you please, you have the floor, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my favorite topic, and I want to thank Superintendent Percasen for presenting Part Two of the request for STEM. In looking at the report, I'm seeing that we are talking about the curriculum. Page Two of the report talks about grade one to eight science, grade one to eight math curriculum. I do not think the curriculum was part of the request. However, I think we are doing a great job with the curriculum, and I'm not, I never ever had a problem with the great work that we are doing with the curriculum. The idea of the motion on the floor was to talk about extracurricular activities. And in the conclusion, you mentioned the, there is an interest in STEM can be promoted by our board. The word can be is an optional thing for us, and we did not ask for something optional. We asked for a plan. The plan has dates and times, and how to go about executing the request. So I'd like some dates and times to be proposed to be put forward today. Or another comment here is, we're talking about dedicated and committed staff. I'm not sure what we are talking about, and why do we need dedicated and committed staff? If at all we need, if at all we need a staff, yes, we could have something on the lines of a sports convener. And I did talk to Director Daley about a little bit of this, Core Data, Sabi Ousgo can end this. Funding support, yes, and this steering committee is an excellent, excellent idea. I love that idea. However, this does not really address the motion. So I'd like Director Daley to talk about the plan, how to get this implemented, and if he can get that, that'd be really good. And one more thing, Mr. Chair. How does this help the spec ed students in any way? Superintendent Percasen could throw some light on this. Thank you.
Superintendent Percasen, can you address that question, please?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Dort. Certainly, when it comes to our special education students, we are always looking at every item of programming that we do offer to accommodate and modify our programming according to their needs. So within their individual education plans, as well as any other considerations that they are entitled to, they're always a consideration in all the work that we do and all programming that we do together with program services, student success, as well as special education. I hope that answers the question. Thank you.
A follow-up, Trustee Dort?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question, my main question was the plan. The plan is not presented. And I'd like to ask Director Daley if he can provide the plan. This is nice to have. It says, interest in STEM can be promoted at our board. It doesn't say shall be promoted at our board, and when it says shall, it shall have a path. We do not have a path moving forward. We're just talking about great things, and we need to really implement that. So I'm looking for a plan, timelines, thank you.
So I'll turn it over. Thank you for the supplementary, Trustee Dort. I'll turn it over to Director Daley to address your second part of the question.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I would suggest to trustees that the establishment of the steering committee with a wide range of representation would help us to establish the plan that trustees hope to have going forward. I suggest that in terms of timelines, as Trustee Dort has referenced, that we have a draft. Terms of reference for that committee by the end of this school year, so by the end of June, we'd meet with that team in September of 2020, and then we'd bring back an initial report to the second board meeting in October, which I think is October, I think it's October 20th, 2020. So again, we have draft, terms of reference by the end of this school year, so June of 2020, establish the committee, and then bring back an initial report back to trustees on October of 2020.
So I'll move along with Trustee O'Brien, Vice Chair Dort, and you can have last say on this matter. So Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Percasen. Thank you for your hard work, and regarding the steering committee, I think it's a great idea. Do you think at this point it could be done with the staff that we already have, without hiring?
I think...
Superintendent Percasen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that that's the purpose of the steering committee, in that one of the tasks of a steering committee is to make recommendations. And as I have stated, at the current time, it is not that we cannot participate in a steering committee to move the planning forward. It is in our research with all of the boards that we have talked to, it is very clear that this work is very dedicated, particular, and involves personnel that are dedicated to just this work. Certainly, my conversations with Halton District attest the fact that it was a three to four-year planning purpose just to get the grade nine piece going with regard to their I-STEM program, which I believe is very well done, and something to look at, as well as Wellington Catholic. So we have a number of models to look at, but we talked about the fact that it required a dedicated champion at the senior admin level, as well as at the principal level, at the program services level. And right now, our staff, as I said, is overtasked, and they have a lot of portfolios to manage. And I can't imagine to whose portfolio we would add this kind of extensive planning and work. And if we are to offer it, it should be done well, with good considerations, good consultation, and an excellent program that we could all be proud of. One of the factors to keep in mind is that in many school, in many school boards, these programs were a reaction to declining enrollment in our secondary schools, and that is a factor that we do not have in Halton Catholic. We are not experiencing declining enrollment significantly in our secondary schools, particularly not in Milton. So there's a lot to talk about, a lot to consider, and I believe for it to be done well, we do need people that are dedicated to this work. So that's just my opinion, certainly moving forward, but I believe that those are decisions that can be made and recommendations that can be made by the steering committee.
Mr. Chair, is there a follow-up? Follow-up comment? You have a follow-up?
Yes, a follow-up comment. I wanted to echo Trustee Dort's concern. My belief always was that this motion was always directed at extracurricular, not curricular. And I really think the steering committee has to have a focus on extracurricular, as the original motion did state. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Daley, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would agree, Trustee O'Brien, that the focus does seem to be on extracurricular. I guess one of the things, however, that the committee might take a look at is whether or not, I guess if we believe opportunities around STEM are important, whether we want them to be fleshed out in a different way. But if the committee, if it literally is, we're just looking at extracurricular opportunities for our students, then that's what we'll stick with.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor now?
Sorry, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question perhaps for Superintendent Percasen. And it's actually related to the Shizum programs. So I don't know, Rosie, if you can move the report up. But in the appendix, there's a list of the Shizum programs that are currently available within our board, and I noted in your report that there was an application made for five additional programs to begin in the fall. And I was wondering if you could provide any information on what those programs would be and where those are being proposed to be added? I just note that there, you know, if I picked Corpus Christi as an example, that we currently only run two Shizum programs there, and just wondering where we're looking within the board to increase our Shizum programs. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, if I may. I think that it's best that I defer to Consultant Mark Ives to speak to this, or Superintendent McGillicuddy, as Shizum falls within his portfolio, and they would have a more comprehensive response to your question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Director Daley, did you want to address that? Okay, that's fine, thank you. So who wants to address this? Colin, Superintendent McGillicuddy?
This is Mark Ives speaking. I can respond.
Or Mark, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, we do have five applications that I believe are being scored at the ministry right now. We should get results back within the next couple of weeks regarding approval of this. And the two programs that are happening or being applied for bishop breading right now are an energy Shizum program that is going to focus on electrical trade. There's a sports program, also bishop breading potentially. And then there's two programs being applied for Jean Vanyer, a business, and a justice and community safety and emergency services Shizum program. And then there's one more information communication technology Shizum program that's going to be applied for at Loyola.
So, thank you. Can I have a follow-up?
Have a supplementary?
Yes. So I guess my follow-up question, so thank you very much for that, Mark. A follow-up to that then would be, and that's great to see that we have applied and that those applications are being reviewed and scored. How do we look at increasing our Shizum program at those schools where we don't see very many programs? Understanding again that, you know, it's great that we're adding some to bishop breading and Jean Vanyer, but I'm just curious, again, if I was to use Corpus Christi as an example, you know, how do we go about determining where we want to apply for that next Shizum program? At what school and for what program? And when would that next round of applications be going in?
A great question, yeah. There's a lot of discussion that goes into where should we apply for a program? Often, it comes directed from student interest, from parents, from staffing, teachers at the school, from administration. A lot of conversations happen with regard to what focus we should be applying for. Essentially, it comes down to a champion. Superintendent Percasen mentioned that champion keyword. And when you have a champion to run a program, the program thrives. And when a program is mandated on a group of teachers, then it doesn't run as successfully as it could. So that's always my advice when selecting appropriate Shizum programs for a school. With regards to when the applications go in, it usually happens at the end of semester one, start of semester two. But the application process is very extensive. So when a focus is indicated at a school of interest, the conversations start in September. In fact, they've already started right now for next year to begin that application. There's a lot of research that has to go into looking at the student interest at the school, but then also, why should this Shizum program be approved? Is there a need for that, that program in the community? Is there, are there going to be potential jobs for those students in that field? And we have to provide a very detailed analysis of the job prospects, and we speak to a lot of sector partners, and we reach out to all of our contacts to provide this information to the ministry, who then scores it, and then reviews it from basically March until June, and then they provide us with an approval or a denial of it. So we worked very hard on the applications on those five that are being put forward right now. And there's no reason that we believe that they won't be approved, so we're very hopeful for that. And each of those programs that we did apply for do have a champion assigned to it. And it's not just one teacher that runs the program. It's a champion that runs it, but it's really a team of support teachers that are linked to that champion teacher. There's the student services department, there's the co-op department, there's the administration. There's a whole team of people that make the program run. It's not just one person. There is a big part of this that is considered extracurricular, so these teachers are, you know, volunteering a lot of their time after school. It takes an incredible amount of energy to start one of these up, and then an even bigger amount of energy to keep it going and to help it thrive. Each of these programs, the students apply for them and have to get accepted into them. And there's a lot of components to these specialist high skills major programs that the students have to achieve. And these champions oversee and work with every single student individually to make sure that they achieve all the requirements and that they succeed. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, thank you very much. That was very helpful. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Superintendent Percasen, for your report and your conclusion. Really, that's where all the meat is. So, you know, I think as a board, we need vision. And the reality is, if 75% of our students who are in school today are going to be working in STEM-based employment, then really our vision should be geared towards providing those services. We, you know, we need a, we need a five-year vision, we need a 10-year vision. So, agreed, you have to have a maniac with a mission. If we don't have a champion, somebody who's driving this program, and then it will grow organically and incremental based on the programs as they roll out, logically, it makes sense to start extracurricular. But the reality is, and obviously this will have to come through the government also, is that our curriculum has to change. It has to be based in these concentrations. If that's where the employment is going to be in the future. So I think right now is a good time. We're starting our multi-year plan. I think that as trustees, we need to incorporate the development of STEM resources in that plan, and it can't be burdened and put on our existing staff. This has to be additional staff that we have to budget for and try to get funded, or look at where our funding is being allocated. Because the reality is, this is the future. This is where our students are going to be working, and our obligation is to make sure that we give them an appropriate education. Nobody will be surprised in 15 or 20 years if most of our students are working in these areas. Then we need to have vision and react to that today. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. My video on... Melissa Carnelli, you have your hands up, your hand up?
I'm just trying to, I think I'm frozen. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you, we can hear you.
My computer seems to be frozen here. So I just wanted to speak really quickly to the curricular, why we, when we got together and talked about the report, why we did, why we talked about the curricular piece of it. That's really what we can sort of work on and focus on. The whole idea of extracurricular is just that, right? Just what we talked about. It's outside of our jobs, and it requires volunteers. So we can propose, we can suggest, we can provide opportunities, but we can't mandate that stuff, and we can't force any of that. So we thought we would look into the curricular pieces, because as curriculum services, that is the stuff that we can, we can work on. And the whole idea of dedicated staff, as I think in the last week's meeting, I think it was, hopefully it was pretty clear that everyone has quite full portfolios right now in curriculum. And so I think, and when, in our discussions, when Mark and Joanne and Anna and I were sitting and talking about this, if we want this to move forward, and if you want that five-year plan, and if you want this to grow, someone needs to be dedicated, because you can have a champion, but if they're not supported, it's going to fall off, and it's going to go by the wayside. And especially because it's extracurricular, you need someone who's going to be able to promote, but then also follow up and keep promoting and support, and, you know, continue to be driving those small programs that they're getting, you know, people to buy in and people to start participating so that they can grow. And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that distinction clear as to why we had included the curricular. We did understand that you wanted the extracurricular piece, but understanding that there's only so much we can do in order to promote that extracurricular. We can promote, but we can't, we can't force or mandate.
Thank you, thank you for your insight. I'll pass it over to Director Daley. He wishes to make a comment on this?
Just two things. So first of all, we certainly are committed to that extracurricular component, and as Melissa did point out, we will need to find people at the school level to help champion it. But that, that sort of work will come out of the upcoming steering committee. I think just a note to Trustee Murphy's comments about preparing students in some of those STEM-related fields. I think if you, we've got a good start with it. If you do take a look at that list of high skills majors in Appendix A, one of the more popular ones is, in fact, in that STEM field. So six of our nine high schools have a focus in computer science or engineering, mechatronics, computer science, engineering, media. So I think we've got a good start there. I think it's something that we have encouraged. And I think also to Trustee Duarte's earlier comment, whether it's extracurricular or curricular, we certainly want to meet the needs of all of our students, whatever their pathway might be. I think it's worth noting that Mark's also our OIEAP consultant along with a special size skills major. So there's a couple of different ways that we can encourage this.
So before I go to the last comment to Vice Chair Duarte, Trustee Guzzo, you have a question or a comment?
It's just, it's just, it's just... Sorry. Sorry, technical difficulties. Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify. I don't think the intent is for, I don't think the intent for any of the trustees is to say that anything that's extracurricular that we're going to force. I think the idea is that we offer something and that we're consistent in what we offer. And that, yes, we do get somebody to champion it. So I just, I'm just trying to understand the balance here. And maybe Trustee Duarte in his closing comments can kind of help me out if I'm missing out. But I think the whole point of it is to offer some sort of consistency. And if it is offered, that what is offered is meaningful.
So Vice Chair Duarte, you get to say, wrap this up and give us your thoughts and observations and how we're going to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I must thank Trustee Guzzo, Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Murphy. We all talked about a few things. We agreed on extracurricular activities. STEM is an extracurricular thing. We talked about having a champion. Yes, a great steering committee, yes. Now to Trustee, as Superintendent Percasen said, and I think Melissa, let's say we need some, we all overload it with work, yes. We could consider a coordinator. If you have a sports coordinator managing the sports in all our schools, we could have a squad, something like a coordinator managing STEM in all our schools. It's something the steering committee will decide. So great points, again to Trustee Guzzo's comments. We are not forcing something down on students. We are providing the opportunity and uniformly across all our schools. Some students will like STEM and grow with it, whereas some students will not like it at all, which is totally fine. All our role is trying to provide the opportunity across the system. And I think that's very well taken. As a closing remark, I'd like to thank Superintendent Percasen and her team for first of all engaging in this conversation. We've been talking about this for quite some time. And we have come a long way and we all are on a common platform now that we have to provide. There's no way, we cannot look back. We have to look forward and the only way forward is STEM and providing opportunities because technology is changing and we need to keep ourselves abreast of the situation. So once again, thank you Superintendent Percasen. And I really look forward to the steering committee. And I look forward, I hope I can be part of the steering committee and learn and with you all as well. Thank you.
That's a nice plug there, Vice Chair Duarte. Anyways, thank everyone for your input and participation. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 10, Information Items. The much anticipated Student Trustee Report. Trustee Bambra, could you please lead us off in your report to the board?
Actually, I believe Trustee Swan will be starting with it.
Yes, I will be starting off with this report. As you will see, it's actually a verbal report as the school year comes so close. There are fewer and fewer things that we are doing. But I just want to give a brief summary on what has been happening these past two weeks. So OSA ECO's Annual General Meeting was canceled earlier in April. So they were deciding to hold an electronic general meeting that took place in May 21st to May 24th. Our incoming student trustees received professional development sessions much like what OCA offers in its modules on how to best fill their roles in the upcoming years as student trustees. Outgoing student trustees, we received PD sessions on transitioning out of our roles and really looking towards post-secundaries. Information that's on executive positions were provided on the 21st for this conference. All of our student trustees met via teleconference on the 21st and 24th. Currently, OSA ECO is hosting executive positions and our incomes are running. We will reveal the results in the June 16th regular board meeting. Furthermore, OSA ECO closed their equity survey last week. We have received 3,324 responses from students all across Ontario. We hope that the findings of the report is set to be heard most likely next year. We held our year-end senate meeting on May 26th. Definitely, we thanked all of our senators for all of their hard work. We recognize the work that they have done throughout the year. And despite the disruptions that we faced, we did accomplish quite a bit. We held our mental health seminar in February. We invited our Chief of Mental Health Programming, Chief Social Worker and Director Daly. We attended the International Student Orientation back in August as well as preparing for CDP solution, which unfortunately was canceled for this year, but we hope to see that run next year as COVID-19 kind of passes and we can put that behind us and move forward. Currently, we are also hoping to make a graduation video. A lot of our students will be graduating by teleconference and we hope to make a graduation video for our grade eights and grade 12s. Hopefully this week. And all of the schools will have access to those to use them as they wish. And lastly, of course, we have our applications for the student senate. This closed, the application form closed yesterday. And currently, our incoming student trustees are reviewing them over the next few weeks. And they will be making their decisions on the applicants by the end of the school year with the hope that this will start in September. So I would be happy to take any questions.
Can we leave the questions to the end? And perhaps what we can do is move on to the next Student Trustee Report? And then we can open it up?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, that's actually all of the things and items that we had in our student trusty report.
All right, sorry. I didn't realize that. That's not what my notes say. So go ahead. We'll open it up to questions. Trustees, Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor? No? There's no questions?
Actually, I don't. It must have been from the past. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so there's no questions? If there's no questions, I'll move on to Agenda Item 10.2, Evidence-Based Strategies, Literacy, Numeracy, Teams, Annual Report, and Student-Centered Coaching. Superintendent Percasen, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. You have before you the information report and annual report on these two projects that we discussed being involved in and continuing to be involved in in our board. And I do have with me this evening Curriculum Coordinator Jill Staples for Student-Centered Coaching and our consultants Melissa Carnellos and Kristen Davison to answer questions around evidence-based strategies. So I invite you to ask any questions that you may have with regard to the reports at this time.
Trustees, is there any questions, comments? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Staples, great results. In Class A, the Level 3 students went from a 12% to a 76% during the coaching cycle. This is absolutely amazing from a teaching perspective. My question is, is there any evidence of retention of this great effect the long term, say, six months after the coaching cycle is finished?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Thanks. Yeah, that is something that we've been considering as well. This is a new program that we just started this year. And so the data is kind of very, it's reflective of a very short cycle because we weren't able to continue with the work due to job action and then the COVID school closure. So our intention is to be able to continue the work and the monitoring over a longer period of time so that we can determine if, you know, what the results are and how we're building capacity in the schools and the students with the teachers.
And a follow-up comment, Mr. Chair?
Well, go ahead.
I would just say I would really support that. I mean, that kind of a change is astronomical. And to see if you can maintain that, say, even over a year period or even half a year, I think would be really worth supporting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Are there any other questions? Trustee Ohern, is there not? Now you have the floor?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair and through Superintendent Percasen. As far as the evidence-based strategies, and I remember this being presented about the student-centered coaching because I remember having some questions about it. As far as staffing is concerned, when we get back to some source sense of normalcy, do you feel that you are staffed adequately to continue these positive results in multi-years when you have more, let's say, historical data behind your belt?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question, Trustee Ohern. I think that always, you know, more is more. Right now, we basically have five student-centered coaches that have worked with 10 schools. Obviously, if we had more student-centered coaches, we could train more and they could work with more schools and more students. So we kind of have been working with what I have. And whenever you're starting a new project, it's always good to start small anyway and to see what the results are. I know that we're looking at a collaboration with research next year once we're in school in a fulsome way so that we can have, you know, quantitative and qualitative data to share with you specifically. But from our observations and our initial observations, the student-centered coaching really works and it really produces results. And we're very committed to it. And the same with evidence-based strategies at secondary. So we're seeing a lot of really good results in instructional practices and student results. And I think it would be worthwhile to take a look at expanding those programs in the years to come. I think it'll make a difference for our students and particularly with regard to student achievement. So it's an excellent question and something definitely to consider in the time to come. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. No other questions. We'll move on to Agenda Item 10.3, Halton Student Transportation Services Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review. Superintendent Lofz, can you please give us some background on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. He's fantastic. HSTS has annual home-to-school review. He's noted there was no transportation exemption removed from the September 2021 at Christy King Catholic Secondary School, which does not disprove that it impacted our students. As a result, the student hasn't passed audit out of transportation since May 2019.
Any questions? No questions. We'll move on to... Trustee O'Brien?
Yes, I do. Just a point of privilege, it's really hard to hear Superintendent Lofz and I'm just putting that out there. More than usual, but I will continue.
All right. Thanks. So you were...
I have a question. I got that.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead with your question.
All right, with the transportation policy, I think this is 10.3.
Correct.
There are exemptions for students in areas 1.6 kilometers or less from the board, elementary, and 3.2 from the board secondary. Some of these exemptions you've kept and some you haven't because of, but you have a whole list of ones that you've kept. Why are they kept? Like, what enables a student to have an exemption from this? Can you please speak to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair. I have to get further information on that for you. Trustee O'Brien, I don't have that. These are some historical reasons. As in the past, for some reason, something was decided and I don't have that information right now.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
No, I can wait for other time. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a simple point of clarification. What constitutes a policy exemption? Is it the distance or is it something else? Distance of the child from the school? Or is it a different route being allocated? Or is it a spare seat on the bus? What constitutes a policy exemption?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Duarte, it wouldn't necessarily be a seat on the bus. That would be, you could apply for a transportation award.
Courtesy.
Courtesy seats.
Courtesy.
So it wouldn't necessarily be that. It'd be something where there's an issue whether a survey hasn't been developed yet, there's no sign locks in place, safety issue crossing the street and such. It wouldn't necessarily be courtesy seats available or seats on a bus available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, trustees? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10.4, Halton Student Transportation Services Annual School Hour Report. Superintendent Lofz, could you please give us background on this matter?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. HSTS has completed its annual bell efficiency, bell time efficiency review resulting in three changes to our board and 18 changes to the public board. Two of our three changes were either board or principal requests. We're seeing Andrews changing by about 10 minutes, either way, in the morning and the evening. There is some expected efficiencies as a result of this. Any further clarification questions, I'll send it back to you, Chair.
Is there any questions, trustees? Vice Chair Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is a very, very pointed question. And I did read this report and I did see there's one change in Milton. We're going back to a four-period day, which is great. Students love it. But my question was really, any change is requested by a principal based on certain changes to the school. Is it required? Should it not be required that we consult the school council in that school? Or should it be only left to the principal? Because the school council has a general idea of the community of the school and the difficulties they would face. So my question is, should the school council not be consulted when the time change is required for whatever reason? Thank you.
Who are you directing the question to, Trustee Duarte?
Secretary Daly.
All right, Secretary Daly, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly hope that in a case, for example, like Bishop Reading, where it went from a four-period day to a five-period day, that that decision was made in consultation with the school council. I would also assume that in the case of Ascension Elementary School, although it's a board request, we were trying to push it back a little bit. Those conversations would happen at the school level, particularly if it was a kind of a major change like the one that happened at Bishop Reading.
Trustee Guzzo, is there a follow-up? Trustee Duarte?
No, thank you. I had a good answer.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I know that it makes reference to root efficiencies and just because, you know, experience has been, root efficiencies don't necessarily equate to the changes that are necessarily happening. Can we get some more details on what the root efficiencies are? You know, at this point, we don't even know what's going to happen in September if this is even required. However, in preparation to say that it was to happen, prior to that, I'd like to see what the root efficiencies are that are being proposed for the changes in ours.
So, Trustee Guzzo, the resident expert that would be able to address that particular question, Fred Thiebeau, has just become a dad today. So he's not here to field that question or a couple of days ago, my apologies. But so perhaps we can ask Superintendent Merrick? No?
I could bring it back.
Or can we save that question and bring it back for another time?
Absolutely. I'm not asking for it right now because I would like the opportunity to actually look at it. As opposed to just have a quick conversation about it. But yes, it would be great if that could be provided. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. So if there aren't any other questions, I would like to move on to Agenda Item 10.5, Provincial Consolidation of School Board Financial Statements with respect to the seven-month period from September 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2020. Superintendent Lofz, can you just give us some background, please?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I actually find the provincial consolidation of the school board financial statements accounts for the seven-month period, September 1st to March 31st, 2020. Sorry, we're hearing some feedback here. So is anyone else hearing that on the line?
Yes.
Yes, I was actually going to raise a point of privilege. It's becoming really distracting.
Yeah, very much.
Sorry about that, everyone. Hopefully that's better. Our Senior Manager of Financial Services, Adam Cross, is on the line as well. And he'll address, he'll probably take a few more points to bring everyone through. Adam, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Aaron. And through you, Mr. Chair, to all the Board of Trustees. So before you is the annual reporting requirement So before you is the, our annual reporting requirement as of March 31 to the ministry. As you all know, the ministry or the province's annual year-end is March 31, and as a result, they require our seven-month actual results to be included so that they can consolidate into their annual financial statements. Part of these requirements is that our external auditors perform some specified procedures as determined by the ministry, and KPMG's report on these specified procedures is included in Appendix A to this report. And if I could draw your attention to page 100 of the board agenda package, that's where it notes that KPMG has concluded that they found, excuse me, found no exceptions in the procedures that they performed. Appendix A.
Thank you. Are you finished or can we open it up to questions?
Yeah, you can open up to questions. I was just following the scrolling. I was going...
Okay. So trustees, you have questions? Trustee Carabella, I believe you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking at page 104 of the agenda package, and many revenues numbers are placed in there, but there's nothing for the school-generated funds. Is there a reason for that? And then what would be that total 0.4, 0.4?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Carabella. You're right, there isn't any school-generated fund information in this report, and that's because the ministry doesn't actually consolidate those financial figures. Those belong to the schools themselves and aren't included, and so it's excluded from our reporting requirements to the ministry.
Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up?
Okay, but do we have a figure for that?
I don't have it in front of me today.
Okay, and then I had a follow-up question on page 105. It says board-level donations, 52,000.
Trustee Carabella, you cut out. Can you repeat that, please?
Okay, thank you. Sorry. So on page 105, it says board-level donations are 52,000, almost 53,000. So I'm wondering, what does that refer to, board-level donations?
So those are donations that come through to the board itself, not necessarily to a specific school.
Okay, so it's like an external giving the donations to HCDSB?
Yes, this is in the revenue section.
Thank you. That's it.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a seven-month's worth of accumulated budget numbers to compare against these actuals. Is that correct?
That's correct. The ministry is not looking for the budget. They're just looking for the actuals because that's the corresponding period for their financial statements.
Right. So the only barometer that we have right now to see how much seven-month's worth of expenses compared to the budget is essentially to compare... Well, one way of doing it is to basically say, seven months out of 12, we're at 58% of completion of the fiscal year. But do we have, have we done a comparison to the budget as to what that percentage really is? I think we are, we're in the habit of reporting that. So I'd be curious to finding, finding out whether we're at 60%, 70% or 40% for that matter of the total budget plan for the year.
Trustee DeRosa, I believe I have an answer for you from Superintendent Loffs.
Okay.
Superintendent Loffs, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee DeRosa, we actually provided that in the previous month in a quarterly report for February 29. This report here, the intent of this report is to provide to the ministry. It's what the ministry has required, and that's why we've provided it in the way it's presented here. As I mentioned earlier tonight, we're going to be providing another quarterly report as of May 31, which will have the information you're requesting.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. That's it for me for now.
Do you have a supplementary or are you done?
Well, I, the curio, I'm curious by the accounting of the school-generated funds. I believe that the number, the answer that was provided to Trustee Carabella was that we don't have a number in here because...
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. To address that, it wasn't necessarily going to have a number for it. We don't require a number for it and for the intent of this report.
For this report.
For this report, so that's why it wasn't included. There is a number for it, it just wasn't required.
You do report it to us, Tom.
Yeah, it is reported to trustees. You'll be seeing it when we do our quarterly reports as well. It'll be in that report. So, but for the intent of this report here, it's not required.
Is that satisfactory for you, Trustee DeRosa? Are there any other questions? Vice Chair, Vice Chair, oh, sorry, Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back because I just want to make sure that we're clarifying. School-generated funds, school-generated funds, the reason why it's not on this provincial report is because it's not board money per se. It's specific to a school. It is what the school generates, their parent council or school council fundraises for, and that is discretionary on what happens based on their school plan. Where that money is spent, it's reported back to the board, but the board actually has no say on how those funds are directed, correct?
That's, yes, that's, that's correct. And to further that, like, the ministry, it's not, the ministry's not funding us that, so for March, again, because they're not giving us those funds, it means it has no value to them.
Thank you, correct, which also means...
Check it out. Follow-up.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
So, Trustee DeRosa, you will get a follow-up, but can we let Trustee Guzzo finish?
I'll wait in my, I'll wait my turn in that case. Thanks for the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Trustee Guzzo. My apologies for being interrupted.
Thank you. So just, again, just to further clarify, and the reason why, because it isn't ministry dollars, it's school dollars. And again, just to clarify, the board actually has no say in how those funds are spent. It's actually the school community that directs how those funds are spent.
Trustee Guzzo, I believe Superintendent Loffs would like to address that to clarify for you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. One thing I will bring up, though, is that it is consolidated into our year-end figures. So when we report our year-end or audited, the, our auditors will look at those figures as well. We do put it onto our reserve. Whatever hasn't been spent goes into our reserve, and we really don't have any control over that reserve. But to say that it's, it's still under the umbrella of the board, having said that the direction does come from where the money was raised.
Correct. Right. And actually, there's ministry guidelines that talk specifically about funds raised from the school and how they're generated and what they're generated for and the purpose that, and that is where they are directed, and it gives a list of what those funds can be directed at.
It does. That is correct. Yes, there is guidelines in place.
I can add something else to that. That does not include monies raised by school council. That's a separate account altogether, and it's not reported together.
School-generated funds, it's all reported. It's divided onto where it may have come from, but school-generated funds is, it's listed everything that is generated from the school. That is not from the ministry.
The difference...
Mr. Chair, can I have my follow-up, please?
So are you finished, Trustee Guzzo?
Yes, I am. I wouldn't want to hold Trustee DeRosa up, so...
All right. Trustee DeRosa, I'm giving you your follow-up now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo, for being so considerate. I would, I wanted to confirm or I wanted a straight answer on whether these numbers are rolled up into our consolidated financial statements at the end of the year. And my understanding is they are, right, Superintendent Loffs?
Through you, Mr. Chair. They are consolidated up, but I will remind everybody that we, when we do our financial statements at the end of the year, we do not have control over, if there's a surplus, let's say that there is unspent school-generated funds. It doesn't necessarily roll up into our surplus, which we control as a board. It's, it's...
It's reported.
It's reported. If you remember, since I'm going back now to our presentation, but below the line where I mentioned those things that we really don't have control over, that's where this would fall into. So our school-generated funds balances, we do not have control over as a board. You are correct, they are rolled up and they're included in our financial statements, but they are not available to the board to spend. We have to keep it...
I understand. Thank you for that clarification. My, my, my question was only about whether they appear in our consolidated financial statements or not.
They do.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Durt, you have the floor?
Mr. Chair, I will withdraw my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to either Superintendent Loffs or Mr. Cross. It relates, this question relates to Schedule 22, the amortization, accumulated amortization schedule. So, you know, in my mind, I always look at things as straight lines. So for example, if we have 40 years, depreciation of that asset is 52.5%, but it looks like it's 4.7%. Can you give me an overview or educate me on this, this expense?
Um...
Go ahead, Superintendent Loffs.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Adam, you can jump in if I missed something or you have a point of clarification for me. What we look at here, Trustee Murphy, is, you're right, we do amortize our buildings over 40 years, but if we do a betterment to our school, so let's say that we put a new roof on or put a new HVAC system in or do extensive renovation to a school, we will add that, the cost of that renovation to the, obviously to the gross book value of the school. We may also look at the amortization period of it. So if we had a remaining service life of, let's say, 30 years or 20 years, we could also adjust that remaining service life up to take into account of all the additional work that we did in the school. Obviously, we have some other items on that list as well, so we have things that aren't the 40 years. We have portables and things like that. Actually, we don't have portables, we lease ours. Equipment, furniture, computer hardware and things there. Those are other things with different amortization periods, which are, like you said, straight-line method. But the buildings are something that if we add a lot of work into an extensive rental, we may adjust the remaining service life accordingly.
So as a follow-up then, is, so there is an element where we can manipulate that number. It's just not a straight-line number that rolls over every year. And what's the overall impact to our, our operation by manipulating? Does it make sense for some years to take more, more depreciation than others? Or is it something that really is not of a great benefit to us to be able to manipulate?
Superintendent Loffs, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I like the word manipulate, but one thing that's missing from this, Trustee Murphy, is we have something that's called deferred capital contribution. So you know, on a yearly basis, we're going to have our amortization expense, which you're probably familiar with in the business sector. What we have is a deferred capital contribution, which essentially almost offsets our amortization expense. It doesn't do it 100%, but it definitely offsets the majority of it. So let's say that we put in, as I mentioned before, we added in $3 million to a school. So what we would do is obviously add $3 million to the, to the book value of the school or as a, as a in-year contribution to that school, and then amortize it over the remaining 30 years or so. We would then take that $3 million in revenue, we would then add that to the balance sheet as well, and then on a yearly basis, that $3 million that we have in, or that, whatever the expense is of the amortization period, we would take our corresponding revenue, offset it, so the net effect to the board is zero. So really, the remaining service life and adjusting that remaining service life to lower your expense, all we would in turn do would be lower our deferred capital contributions, the net effect would be zero.
Can you hold that thought for a minute? I need a motion to extend. It's 9:59. Can I have a motion to extend?
Do it.
Vice Chair Durt, seconded by?
Peter DeRosa.
Carabella.
Trustee DeRosa, anybody oppose? If no one opposes, we are extending. So go ahead, finish up, Superintendent Loffs.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I know that might sound complicated, but I guess bottom line, cut to the chase, in a perfect world, and we're pretty close. We do have some, we're not exact, so our amortization expense doesn't tie exactly to a deferred capital contribution, but it's relatively close, and anything over and above will be been funding out of our school or no grant.
Thank you. Trustee, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and Superintendent Loffs. Superintendent Loffs, the money that schools get for rentals, are those considered school-generated funds?
No, they are not. I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
No, they are not, no.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
No, I do not.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Just, again, just to clarify, why do school-generated funds roll up to the board statements if...
The, or sorry, Superintendent Loffs, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Because they are technically the assets of the board. They fall under the umbrella of the board, and they are, the board, because they are provided to a board school, they are the assets of the board.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee Carabella?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I will move on to 10.6, 2020, 2021 Budget Estimates Update. Superintendent Loffs, can you provide us with any information on this item here?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, my update is no update. By that I mean, we actually heard this week that we probably aren't expecting our GSNs to pay for student needs until the middle to late June. Having said that, our goal of having something before the trustees by our last board meeting in, in June will not come to fruition. In fact, I don't believe we'll be able to have anything towards, to provide to the board from our revenue, the GSNs, before the end of June. Unfortunately, that's the update I have at this point in time. So I should mention one other thing is, I know typically we have to have our budget thing by the end of June, but the ministry has given us indication that this will be extended to sometime within the summer.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent O'Hara, if he's here.
Superintendent, or Chief Executive Officer O'Hara, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
All right. Could you please field a question by Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Chief Executive Officer O'Hara. Chief Executive Officer O'Hara, from your, you mentioned in your program enhancements for 2020-21, you listed $200,000 for, for what's called estimated impact on job evaluation. Is this $200,000 request above the $200,000 request that was made last year for the evaluation?
Chief Executive O'Hara?
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, the monies that were budgeted were for the study, to do the job evaluation review and to do a market study. What we're asking for is monies to be able to implement the results of the study.
Okay. Follow-up question, Superintendent O'Hara, how did you come up with 200,000?
Again, that, that was a percentage figure, and we did get the assistance of Superintendent Loffs for that, and he can give you an indication of how much of, of a budget calculation that actually meant.
Okay. Another follow-up. Would it not make more sense to wait to see the report first and then make the request? I mean, how do you know it might be more, it might be less? And since we don't approve the final budget till December, would it not be best practice to wait until we see the report and then we can ask for the exact number?
Go ahead, Chief Executive Officer O'Hara.
Thank you for that question and through you. Again, we thought it was prudent that we would go and put forward some monies to cover off potential additional costs. We do know from a previous study that we were significantly behind in terms of salaries in certain areas. And in any event, whenever there is a job evaluation review, some levels of positions go up, some stay the same, but again, you need, you need funds to be able to implement. So again, it was out of, you know, so... So again, it was out of some prudence, good budgeting, that we felt that we should have some money set aside for that, recognizing that, you know, if we need more, we would certainly have to come back to you. If we needed less, it would roll into the board's bottom line. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you have another question or...
No, but a comment, I have to agree to disagree on that. I think it would be more prudent to wait to see the report, since we don't do the final budget till December anyway, then put it in. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your observation, your comment. If there are no other questions, I would like to move on to Agenda Item 10.7 Extended School Closures and Distance Learning. Secretary Daley, can you please give us some background on this?
Yes.
Or an update, I should say.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to try and share my screen here.
So, you're going, right?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of the report is to update trustees on distance learning up until this date. During our latest phase of the school closure, we've been working with schools to increase a variety of instructional approaches that include both synchronous and asynchronous means of connecting with students. So as trustees would recall, we've been on our current period of school closure since just prior to the March break, and towards the end of May, we found out that the school would, schools would remain closed until the completion of this school year. So tonight, I'd like to provide you with a brief update as to where we're at right now, and then start to talk a little bit more about the remainder of our 2019-2020 school year, our summer learning program for this summer, and then some prep for re-entry to school for September of 2020. As always, the guiding principles of our continuity of learning plan has been the health and wellbeing of our students, staff and families, to provide continuity of learning for students that's flexible and accessible, and to provide the necessary supports to our staff to do the best job that they can do. I think the last time we gave an update, we looked at this kind of four-phase period in terms of the extended school closure. So we're in what we would consider Phase 2 up until June 30th, and starting to plan for Phase 3 school reopening in September of 2020. Our goal in this current phase, as we complete the school year, is to successfully complete the school year, for students to advance to the next grade, for students to graduate from Grade 8 to high school, or from high school, or from high school, and certainly for secondary students, is to be able to earn the requisite number of credits for them to graduate from high school, or to be able to apply to their program of destination or program of choice that they have. In terms of some of our support, so we continue to support students and families with regards to mental health. This is done through our social work, our psychology staff, our CYCs, they've continued to hold virtual meetings, they've continued outreach to parents and guardians, and continue to build their caseloads. We've also provided additional professional development to our ECEs and EAs. And in terms of PD, we've been providing PD, as I mentioned, but also our social workers, CYCs and other staff have been involved in PD. So for example, over the last little while, they've continued professional development in virtual counseling and suicide prevention offered through School Mental Health Ontario. In addition, our mental health team continues to provide resources and supports for schools as well as for individual students and families. You'll recall from our last couple of reports that we've had lots and lots of information through special education. I've kind of cut it down tonight because you'll note in the appendix to tonight's board meeting is the special education update that was given at our last SEAC meeting, so lots of great information there. Needless to say, our Spec Ed department continues to support students, educators and family. They continue to both provide and partake in professional development. Over the last couple of weeks, and certainly for the remaining part of the school year, there's been an increased focus on alternative programming and alternative reporting for our final reporting cycle, and also, as we typically would at this point in the year, increased focus on supporting transition for students with special needs. So that could be to a specialized program, it could be from secondary to high school, or it could be from high school to post-secondary. Obviously, the challenges that we have in that regard are the fact that we need to do those transitions in a virtual way, but we'll speak to hopefully some transition planning we may be able to conduct over the summer, a little bit further in the presentation. In terms of staff resources and supports, our Curriculum Services Department continues to support individual teachers in schools, and in the last couple of weeks with a more specific emphasis on synchronous learning. So our curriculum staff have provided professional development to specific schools, they've partaken in staff meetings, they've worked with some of our secondary subject councils. Our educators continue to identify their own learning needs and they can request support from Curriculum Services staff. We've continued to offer where we can professional development for a variety of employee groups through our Equity, our Human Rights and Equity Officer. So all of that work continues. In terms of supports for school administrators, this really hasn't changed. We continue to have weekly meetings between school administrators and our senior staff. Senior staff meets twice a week. Our Curriculum Services Department continues to support our principals. We continue to upload information to the communications toolkit for school administrators that they can share with parents or share with teachers. I think I noted in the Friday update to trustees, we do have three of our school administrators providing D2L and service for both our staff, but really for schools throughout Ontario, North America, and I think that in-service actually takes place tomorrow. Denise Colley, who Trustee could be familiar with, also was involved in some virtual PD last week as well, that had a bit of an international flavor to it. So as we finish up this school year, again, our priorities have been to continue to support educators, to plan ways to celebrate and commemorate our Grade 8 and Grade 12 students who are graduating, to implement a protocol where staff, students, families can access our buildings in order to pick up personal belongings. We are continuing to prepare for our summer learning programs, we've got a couple of updates on that tonight, and again, we're looking to September of 2020 for a hopeful return to school. So a reminder to trustees that all of our schools will host a graduation celebration in June. We've met with family of schools, our family of school superintendents have met, and kind of under the leadership of Superintendent Nar, have met with all of the administrators to have some consistency around graduations, so there's certain things we'll see in every school, and then obviously, different school communities have their different traditions that they've developed. So schools are consulting with parents and graduates. There will be scholarships and awards, as we would normally have at the end of the year. Virtual graduation ceremonies will take place, or either be livestreamed or pre-recorded, and that will include remarks from trustees where appropriate, a valedictorian address, if schools have that in place. We've also reached out to our parishes, our chaplaincy, our board chaplaincy leader and our school chaplaincy leaders, to make sure that we have appropriate liturgies in place for those graduations as well. In terms of access to schools, we're just finalizing our access plans at both the elementary and secondary level, so that'll give an opportunity at elementary and secondary for parents to collect student belongings. So we're looking at kind of the mid-June to end of June time period, and we're just finalizing those draft protocols as we speak. In terms of summer learning, we've talked about this a couple of times, so for our summer learning credits, we'll have our traditional full credit, secondary school credits. This year, we're also offering upgrades for students who might feel the need to spend time upgrading the work they've had, so that's a two-week or 55-hour course. And new to us this year, we'll be offering credit recovery to students who may have a missing element to their coursework, perhaps one major assessment that they need to complete in order to gain the credit. One of the things, so credit recovery is new for us in our board, and all of those will be offered virtually. We did receive additional information from the ministry on, I believe it was May 29th, with regards to some special education support for summer school. So that's exciting, because we haven't been funded that way in the past. So that can be support for CERT or EA support for students who are in our secondary school credit programs, but there's also a little bit of flexibility around some other summer school programming, programming we may be able to provide. So I'm going to ask Superintendent Sabrano just to talk about some of the thinking that we've got in place right now with regards to some of those additional Spec Ed programs.
So as Director Daley indicated, ideally indicated, we have received funding this year in the areas of special education and mental health supports, which is, which is unique this year, and so we're excited as a team to see what kinds of programs that we can create for the summer of 2020. As Director Daley indicated, in the past, we have not typically supported summer school programming from a special education perspective. We have, we've had special education reserve teachers, we have not employed educational assistants, we have not employed mental health supports. So this is all brand new for us. So what we're looking at is, we're looking at creating, from a mental health perspective, the funding allows for us to employ professionals, professional and parent professional staff. So for example, mental health professionals, social workers, speech and language pathologists, psychologists, child and youth workers as well, to support, for ongoing support of our students on caseloads that are existing today, to take on new caseloads and to respond to crisis situations. Our mental health workers will also be available to support students in late August transitioning back to school in September, whatever that back to school day looked like. From a special education perspective, as Director Daley indicated, we're looking at hiring CERTs this year for all of our summer school programs in secondary, as well as our Grade 6, 7, 8 literacy and literacy programs. We're also going to be hiring educational assistants to support that learning, that virtual learning that supports our students with special needs will be enrolled in those programs. And again, what's exciting is that we're looking at creating summer programming for some of our specialized classes. For example, looking at our essential skills classes, our structured teaching classes in a summer school format, again, hiring special education teachers, hiring educational assistants to support that virtual type support in the summer. We're also looking at reading intervention. We recognize that a lot of our students who require reading intervention this school year may have not gotten, taken full advantage of programs such as Empower, and so we're looking at possibly creating reading intervention programs, again, virtually, to support those students. And then finally, the funding allows for transitions in late August, in the final two weeks before school begins. These in-person classes, ideally, they'd be in person, again, if public health allows for it, these transition classes would allow for students to, those struggling academically, those struggling with mental health, an opportunity to come to experience school, to get back into the experience of what school is. And especially for those students that are transitioning from elementary to secondary school, transitioning from one school to another. In special education, we have an obligation to provide those transition supports for those major transition times, and again, we're excited that we have the funding this year to support that in late August.
Maybe at this point, because there's so much new in terms of what we're able to provide through special education, might be take a break and just to see if there's any questions, just to see if there's any questions specific to special education.
Okay, so five minutes, three minutes?
So I don't remember, I just wondered if any trustees...
Oh, okay, sorry. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor, you have a specific questions that relates to this particular topic?
I do, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for Superintendent Sabrano, and I'm so excited to see that the ministry stepped up to provide those supports and not necessarily funding for Spec Ed for mental health, as well as the Spec Ed students for that summer support. I'm just wondering what, so you know, looking at, we're at the beginning of June, and some of those programs will be starting, you know, what we're looking at as far as some of these specifics around those supports, like how would people go about starting to plan for some of those, those participations for those Spec Ed students? So will they know that these programs are going to be able to support? I'm just curious a little more detail on what that might look like as far as how we're going to offer that and how that's going to work? Is that through their existing school? How will that look like?
Thank you, Trustee Agnew, for that question. It's an excellent question. We are, we just received the information on the funding just late last week. Our special education leadership team has been meeting and will be meeting this week. In fact, we have a full meeting all day tomorrow to look at what these programs could look like. You're absolutely right, we are already in the first week of June. Our summer program will begin in the first week of July. We don't have a lot of time to create them, to advertise them, to share the information with our schools and our parents. The plan is, again, from a logistics standpoint, we plan to support our regular secondary summer school programs in our Grade 6, 7, 8 literacy and literacy programs with CERTs and educational assistants. Again, to support students that would, possibly in the past, students that may not have taken advantage of those programs because those supports were not in place in the past, may take part in these going forward for 2020, for the summer of 2020. We will let parents know through a communication piece about these supports. We will be informing SEAC at our next SEAC meeting what these programs will look like, and again, we will be communicating to our community these types of supports that will take place in these programs. Those specialized programs that I spoke to that could possibly look like, again, we need to create those programs, we need to hire for those programs, because these are summer support programs that have never been in existence. So it's going to be, it has to be a quick turnaround, and part of the planning will be communication and advertising to our parent community, because they would not have normally known that these programs existed because they didn't exist. So I don't have a lot of specifics about what that will look like. We're hoping that within the next week, we will have more specifics, and again, it will be communicated to the communities.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Do you have a follow-up, Trustee Agnew? Thank you. Do we have any other questions? So do you have a follow-up, um, trustee Agnew?
Um, I, I don't have a follow-up, but just to comment again to say that I just think this is, uh, you know, if this is something good that has come out of, of COVID-19, um, it's, it's an excellence. I, I just think it's, it's excellent. I think it's fantastic that we are going to find a way for, um, some of our Spec Ed students to participate in some of these programs that they may not, as you said, Superintendent Sabrano, have had access to previously. And, uh, there may be a reality that some of these students may have a larger gap in their learning, because maybe they're not doing as well with distance learning or whatnot. Um, so just to have the chance to participate in some of these summer programs, I think is fantastic. Uh, and thanks to staff for, you know, trying to get this together quickly with a short timeframe to turn this around and make it possible. So thanks for that.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Carivella, you have the floor?
Hi there. I just wanted to ask you with the summer learning, are Grade Eight students, uh, able to take Grade Nine credit courses?
Uh, Director Daly?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so yes, so, uh, this year, for the first time, uh, we'll be offering what, what are typically called Reach Ahead credits. So Grade Eight students can reach ahead, uh, to take a Grade Nine summer school course. Um, it might be a year where we might caution it in some ways, considering students really haven't had a regular end of their school year, but it's certainly available to them, uh, for this year. Uh, and just in terms of some other summer learning, uh, programs, a few we mentioned, uh, previously. Uh, we did, uh, receive, um, notice that, uh, through the Council of Ontario Directors of Education, uh, we'll be able to provide the traditional summer learning camp virtually that we have run in the past. Uh, so this year, we're looking at running it for students entering Grade Six, Seven, and Eight. And we've also applied for some supplemental funding to hopefully run, uh, a program specific to our ELL learners. Uh, so lots going on in a pretty short period of time in order to get, uh, summer school up and running. Uh, so thanks to, uh, Superintendent McGillicuddy, uh, for our staff at Thomas Merton, and also to our Spec Ed staff for, uh, for getting new programs underway. In terms of kind of the go-forward, so, uh, while we are wrapping up the school year, we're also looking forward to, uh, September of 2020 and reopening and returning to school, hopefully. Uh, we, we don't have, um, uh, we don't have answers right now. We really have, um, scenarios, I guess. Um, but again, as we're planning to return for September, we'll want to ensure that we have protocols in place uh, to keep our students and staff safe. Um, we will want to continue online or distance learning opportunities to supplement in-school instruction, uh, regardless of how we come back. And also continue focus on supporting our students who have been out of school, uh, by that point for several months. So in terms of what we might, um, anticipate coming back in September, uh, there's really a kind of a couple of options. So we could come back to school face-to-face. Um, we could come back to school completely online, like we are now. Or we could come back to school, some combination of both, so some sort of blended, um, format. So in all three of those scenarios, there's a number of considerations that we're taking, uh, into account. Some of them are similar, um, across, uh, across all the, all the possibilities. Certainly, uh, continuing to support our Catholic identity if we're not in a face-to-face, um, situation will be something that we'll need to really, uh, focus on. Um, in terms of, uh, scheduling, that'll really determine, or be determined possibly by, um, the type of, um, fiscal distancing, uh, guidelines that we might be put under. Um, so we're, we're anticipating, we're trying to plan for all three of these eventualities. Um, and certainly in the, um, conversation that the, um, the Minister of Education had with chairs this week.
So Secretary Daly, I'm gonna have to stop you there. It's, um, 10:29, trustees. I need a motion to continue. Um, so can I have a mover to continue?
I'll move it.
So it's moved by trustee Carivella. Can I have a second there? I, I'm sorry, say that again. You were cut off?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Anybody against?
I am.
All right, trustee O'Brien, so trustee DeRosa, so we are finished. Can I have closing prayer? Uh, trustee O'Hern Zernota? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move it.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, seconded by? By his chair, Duarte. All right, um, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All right. Favor, okay, so can, uh, trustee O'Hern Zernota, can you please lead us in closing prayer?
My pleasure through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Prayer for encouragement. Lord, instill in me a new spirit, so I may be encouraged to persevere. Give me the confidence I need to approach every event in my life with fearlessness. As the path gets tougher, help me adapt, so I can get through even the most difficult situations. Give me the encouragement I so desperately need. Please hear our prayer. Amen. Amen, Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.